Good evening and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. And welcome back to all of our students to this wonderful new school year, which we are actually hoping and counting on being a great year. Thank you so much for joining us all here tonight. Our board members are attending in person and two of them telephonically, so let me check with Vice Chair Gould to see if she's present on the call.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. And Member Lopez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. I also want to remind the public that board members will not be engaging in outside electronics or digital communication during the meeting, so that we can focus our attention on the meeting itself, giving our full attention to the matters immediately before us. So if you're trying to contact us, please continue to do so before and after each meeting. To my fellow board members and district staff and members of the public when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it, so our YouTube and Orange County viewers can, Orange TV viewers, can clearly hear and understand you. Thank you so much for participating and attending in tonight's meeting, and we will begin our meeting with the moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have two exciting recognitions. As you all know, leading our students to success cannot be done without the thousands of dedicated and hard-quality team members of OCTS. Each person supports the educational achievements and activities of our students and our schools day in and day out. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize Digital Curriculum Learning and Procurement, who have been honored for their exemplary work. First is the Digital Curriculum and Learning Team, led by Associate Superintendent Rob Bixler. Where are you, Rob? Stand up so we can recognize you. Thank you, sir. And the team. And can we get the whole team? I know we're supposed to recognize you afterwards, but... So, many of you here know, but the audience watching may not realize, that OCTS began its one-to-one digital device initiative back in 2013, piloting the program at seven schools. During the pandemic last year, we were able to reach our goal for all students and teachers to receive a digital device at all of our 202 schools, and offer the Launch Ed at Home learning option for our students. For this forward-thinking effort, the International Science and Technology Education Institute honored OCTS with its 2021 Distinguished District Award at its ISTE Live 2021 Conference. The distinguished, I can say this word, the Distinguished District Award honors school districts that demonstrate effectiveness and innovation in the use of educational technology, ensure equitable, accessible, and appropriate learning opportunities for all students, exhibit a progressive mindset when it comes to challenges in education, and embrace new ideas and act on them. On behalf of the school board, I congratulate the curriculum and digital learning leadership and the team's work to lead the Herculean efforts to make sure that students can all continue to learn safely. Whether they attended school face-to-face or through Launch Ed at Home last year, because of the learning devices and partnerships in place, our students had and will continue to have needed resources to learn. Team, you helped to ensure that OCTS continues to raise the bar with our use of innovative and equitable resources, which truly helps make the difference and makes us separate from all other education sector members. Thank you very much for all that you've done. It's not just the recognition that you've got, it's really the accomplishment with our children that matters the most. Next, we want to recognize tonight our Procurement Services Team, one of the leading procurement departments in the nation, committed to that profession. Our team has been awarded the National Institute of Government Purchasing, Inc.'s accreditation for Quality Public Procurement Departments. OCTS is one of only five school districts in the country to be awarded this accreditation. Criteria is rigorous, aligning to NIGP's best practices, and is evaluated by a panel of subject matter experts, NIGP staff, and academics. The application requires supporting documentation and evidence from every area of the Procurement Services Department. The team also earned the 2021 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute. The Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award criteria, which are updated annually, are designed to recognize organizational excellence in public and nonprofit procurement. We are truly fortunate to employ such a talented team of professionals who work hard to deliver best-in-class value, customer service, and innovative solutions for our district. Procurement Services Team members, if you all would stand so we can please recognize you as well. Thank you, everyone, and congratulation on both of these achievements in setting us apart from districts across the nation. And as I said before, most importantly is what you do internally, not the recognition you receive outside. On behalf of this board, we are incredibly grateful to have such a talented and dedicated team. Thank you all. And next, Dr. Jenkins, newly appointed administrators. And then we will let these good folks go home for the evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have just a few. Jennifer Marie Appri is the new Assistant Principal at Olympia High School. Cori Lynn Johns, the new Assistant Principal at Orange County Virtual. Tamara Joan Madrano, Assistant Principal at Cypress Springs Elementary. Heather Ann Rodriguez, Assistant Principal at Memorial Middle School. Rebecca Young, Assistant Principal for Rosemont Elementary. Daniel Kimpinger, Principal of Glen Ridge Middle School. That is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Can we give everyone a round of applause? All right, here's the best part of the meeting. Those of you that we recognized, you are free to adjourn if you would like. Thank you again for being here, giving us this opportunity to recognize you. No. Shoot. Whoa. Vice Chair Covert. I should have mentioned, Member Covert will be serving as Vice Chair for this meeting. Do you want to introduce that interesting piece of data there that you just shared with us?
I would love to, because they can still hear us out there in the lobby. I just wanted to reiterate how extraordinary this recognition for our purchasing department is, because they were one of only five districts in the country to receive this recognition. There are nearly 14,000 school districts in the United States, 13,800. And so that tells you how extraordinary that recognition is. And so that is another reason that we are so proud. Thank you.
That is awesome. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
All right, then I will seek a motion to approve the agenda as drafted and published. Motion by the Acting Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Member Castro Dennel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Member Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you. Member Gould?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's move on to public comment. Let me check. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak? Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, we do not have any in-person speakers or callers that wish to speak to any item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And we have no public hearings, so the item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as adopted? Motion by Member Gallo, is there a second? Member, second by Member Bird.
Second.
Okay, and third by Member Lopez. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Member Lopez?
Aye.
And Member Gould?
Aye.
Thank you. Non-consent agenda item 1701, Dr. Jenkins. We did not pull this from the consent agenda, did we? I'm struggling with this.
Hold on, we're checking.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm thinking that that stayed on the consent agenda, because you said there was no changes to the consent agenda. I'm quite certain that, yeah, Dr. Jenkins, it was covered in the consent agenda. I apologize for the confusion.
Got it.
We're okay? All right, there are no items from non-consent. With that, Dr. Jenkins, do you have a report for the board?
I am so pleased to report we have finished our first day of school for the 2021 school year, and we have had an excellent first day. As always, we have a few glitches around transportation and those bus stops and timing. Certainly want to encourage parents to give us their patience as we work through those glitches for the first week. Only a couple of instances of some AC issues in schools, those I am told were all taken care of today. And then, of course, we had a wonderful press conference at Hungerford Elementary School, where thanks to a partnership with Travel &amp; Leisure, who will be granting scholarships to those young people, they also received backpacks filled, stocked full of everything they could want for the first day of school. Principal contacted parents ahead of time, let them know, "Don't buy your school supplies, they are being provided." And so volunteers from Travel &amp; Leisure came and brought those book bags. The children were ecstatic. A young man said, "I got everything I needed and more for school." He was so pleased. I will tell you, the volunteers that did the stocking of those bags were just as happy to be there. They cheered, they had a big red carpet out for our young people coming in, and just made the first day very special for them. In that press conference there, we shared the same information we shared on Friday in the press conference and on Monday at the mayor's press conference, everything that we're depending on our community to help us with, to make sure our children have a good start to the school year, and also what we are expecting from our employees as well. Last count, we were at about, and the count will change, about 178,000 was the count for today. Of that number, I know folks are curious, we had around 8,000 who actually brought notes to opt out. That's around a 4% mark for our students, those parents who chose or decided to opt out of face masks today. The day went through without any major concerns, we are pleased to report, and we will continue to monitor and keep the board informed. I also want to report, I'm very pleased that last count, I'm sure the number is higher now, Ms. Conquerlin can also reassure me, but we had 10,000 who had already gone through the portal for their vaccination incentive. So out of our 24,000 employees, 10,000 have already confirmed their vaccination to claim their $200. We want to encourage folks to continue that. We think it's a good sign. Those numbers will continue to grow, and we will keep you posted. Lastly, I suppose I should mention, there was a letter shared with us from the Commissioner of Education to Leon County Public Schools in our last meeting on Monday. I want to report, that meeting was both with the governor online and the commissioner. I want to report that the school district is in compliance of the law, both the governor's executive order and the emergency rule by FDOH and DOE. We are in full compliance, Madam Chair. That is all.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Enval, do you have a report for the board? Okay. If not, are there any board members that have policy issues that they want to bring forward at a future meeting? Member Castro Dennel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really pleased to hear that the number of mask optional notes was, what was it, 4%? Because that weighed heavily on my heart today, as all these kids were going back to school. I want to see if we could ask the superintendent to provide the board with updates on more data. I know that Mr. Howitt goes to the mayor's meetings and hears from people with the hospitals and Dr. Pino, and I'd like to ask to have the information from those meetings, if they could deliver it, you know, to us, so that we have those numbers as well. And also to get updates on what's going on within our school system as well, those positive, or the people who are opting out of the masks, that rate, as well as information from our dashboards. Just kind of have it all in one place, and if we could get that, I know it's weekly, but if we can get it even more frequently as we get updates, I think that's important information for us to be able to make decisions based on. I know that we had, that the governor is enforcing a mandate on all the school boards, and I was wondering if maybe our legal counsel could explain what the restrictions are, or what kind of threats that the school boards are facing, what the consequences are, that the commissioner and the governor are telling us or writing to us. If he could, I don't know if Ms. Enval or John or Mr. Pomerini can kind of explain that to us, and what your thoughts are?
Member Castro Dennel? I think that would be excellent, because we get a lot of questions. And I'm sure you're in the same situation of trying to explain to our constituents why we're not doing something different than we're doing right now. So I think it would be great if we could. Did you want to try to do that now?
I would love to, because we keep getting, you know, a letter Friday, we hear it last week, we keep getting more and more threats, is what I call them, you know?
Right. And we also, yeah, and there's also a couple of other districts out there, and I think there's a lot of confusion over this. So, Mr. Pomerini, I'm sure he's here. Okay, that would be excellent. Mr. Pomerini?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Everybody can hear me?
Mr. Pomerini, I'm not sure where you are, and we can hear you, but it would be much easier to see you. Could we ask you to come to the podium? Sorry. Want to see the whites of your eyes, because we won't be able to see your face the rest of it. Thank you.
Or the top of my bald head.
Yeah, the shine from that, anyway. Enough of that.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, thank you. Just want to go over a brief overview, as brief as I can be on this, but it's going to take a little bit of time to just systematically walk you all through it. There's lots of statutes and rules that interplay, and lots of things that you all have to, are subject to, that you all know, but the members of the public need to be aware of. So first, there's a statute called 1,0142 subsection 15. It requires that you all are required to follow all laws and all rules adopted by the State Board of Education, okay? 1,0151 delineates the powers of the superintendent, and subsection 14 of that statute says, the superintendents must require that all laws and rules of the State Board of Education have to be enforced. So, that shows you that you have to follow laws and rules. We all know that, but just as a reminder for the public. There's also a statute that deals with the governor in issuing executive orders, and that statute is 25236. And section 1B of that statute says that any executive order that the governor issues, quote, "has the force and effect of law." So, as you saw in the statute, that you have to follow all laws, an executive order has the force and effect of law, okay? Now, the executive order was issued, 21175 was issued on July 30. Section 1 required the Department of Education and the Department of Health to promulgate certain rules. But, section 2 of that executive order made sure of the following with respect to any rules promulgated by DOE and FDOH. Any action taken pursuant to section 1 above, that's the section that requires them to do rules, shall at minimum be in accordance with Florida's Parents' Bill of Rights, and protect parents' rights to make decisions regarding masking of their children in relation to COVID-19. For those who are not familiar, there was a statute that passed the legislature this year called the Parents' Bill of Rights. It created chapter 1,014 of Florida statutes, and it says that parents have certain rights. Included in that is the right to make medical decisions for their children. And this is the basis upon which the governor said that he is promulgating the mask, the mask rules that he is promulgating through his executive order, and then DOE and FDOH are doing. So, the emergency, there was a few emergency rules. One was adopted by the Department of Health on August 6, and two were adopted by the Department of Education. I'm concentrating at first on the Department of Health rule. That emergency rule says, "Students whose parent guardians have, whose parents or legal guardians have opted them out of a mask or face covering requirement shall not be subject to any harassment or discriminatory treatment, including but not limited to relegation to certain physical locations." So for those of you who said, "Can we just create masked classes and unmasked classes?" That provision of the rule would seem to prohibit that. Isolation during school activities, so if a child shows up without a mask, you can't put them in like the cafeteria or the auditorium, because you have a mask mandate. So that would prohibit that kind of activity. And exclusion from any school-sponsored events or activities, so if they don't have a mask and they show up to a football game or a baseball game, we could not prohibit them from entry because they failed to have a mask on. So, that's the rule that was adopted. And then, quite frankly, we've had, you all have seen the news, but as of now, I know of three counties, Leon County, Tallahassee, Alachua County, Gainesville, Broward County, Fort Lauderdale, that have all adopted mask mandates that do not have opt-outs. And the Leon County one says you can opt out if you have a medical note that you bring from a doctor saying that you can't wear the mask. And if you forgive me one second, I thought I had the letter in front of me, but I need to have it because I want to read in front of it. So, as of yesterday, August 9, the Commissioner of Education wrote a letter to the superintendent and board chair in Leon County. He also did so, the commissioner also did so with respect to the board chair and superintendent in Alachua County. The letters are basically identical, but it goes through and it says that the letter is expressing grave concerns regarding the district's implementation of the emergency rule adopted by the Department of Health on Friday. And he said, "The emergency rule does not require parents to submit medical documentation from a physician or nurse practitioner in order to opt out, and any such requirement is inconsistent with the emergency rule." So, he said, "Those counties' acts in requiring a medical doctor's note to opt out is inconsistent with the rule that has been adopted." He then goes on to cite various Florida statutes. The first one is 1,832, and that statute does state that "the State Board of Education shall oversee the performance of district school boards and the Florida college system of an enforcement of all laws and rules." So again, the state board has the authority and oversight authority to oversee if we are enforcing rules and all laws. And the commissioner, that statute also says, "The commissioner may investigate allegations of noncompliance with law or state board rule and determine probable cause." And then, what the letter required is, "We think your rules, Leon County, Alachua County, and I suspect that Broward County will get something very, very similar to this, either late today, early tomorrow." He gives them a couple days. So this was issued August 9. He gave Leon County until 5 o'clock tomorrow. He says, "You need to document how your district is going to comply with the emergency rule adopted by the State Department of Health." And then, I'm going to quote extensively from the second page, you all have seen it, but the members of the public have not. The letter says, "Depending on the facts presented, I may recommend to the State Board of Education that the department withhold funds in an amount equal to the salaries for the superintendent and members of the school board." He says, "Further, there is no room for error or leniency when it comes to ensuring compliance with policies that allow parents or guardians to make health and educational choices for their children." He says that "it's imperative for the superintendent and school board to remedy, quote, 'this glaring noncompliance,' close quote, and report resolution in the Florida Department of Education by 5:00 p.m. tomorrow." And then the last sentence of this letter is, I think, key, because it was reported in the news that basically the penalty was, they were going to withhold the salary of board members and the superintendent. The last line of the letter says, again, "If this matter is not addressed by submitting documentation establishing compliance with the law, the maximum accountability measures provided for under law will be imposed." Not "may be imposed," "will be imposed," and it's the maximum accountability measures. So if you look at 1,832 subsection 4B, it says, "If the commissioner and the State Department of Education find that we are not complying with laws and rules of the State Board of Education, that they may withhold all of our state funds as a penalty for doing so." So, the reports that say that anyway intimated that the penalty would be limited to the salaries of school board members and the superintendent, I think that last line of that letter would say, "That's not the case," and they're reserving the right to take further financial penalties with respect to boards who don't comply with the rule. And the rule that they are interpreting says, "Parents get to opt their students out, and there's no requirement to have a medical note or anything else like that." So now, what legal options do you have? I'm sure that you all have gotten these questions. I've been in communication with you all on this, but our legal options are very limited. And the first thing that most constituents will point to is Article 9, section 4B of the Constitution. You all are very familiar with that. That is the provision that says that school boards have the right to operate, control, and supervise all public schools within the district. And then there's the health, safety, welfare provision in your statutory powers, 1,001.42 subsection 8, which says that schools must, the school board must provide for proper attention to health, safety, and other matters relating to the welfare of students. So, most folks looking at that say, "Hey, the school board has local control." And under that constitutional provision, their control is paramount to the state. Couple things to say there. 1,132 is a statute that delineates the home rule powers of school board. It says, "Your home rule powers," which is basically your authority to act unless it's not inconsistent with law. We have to act consistently with law. If there is a law in place, or a State Board of Education rule, or some rule that's applicable to us, we have no authority to reject that, okay? And these cases have gone to the courts. You all, this predates some of you all, but some of you all were on the board when we decided to sue under House Bill 7069. You remember that law a couple years ago. It did things like, you know, determine how we were splitting Title I dollars, it got rid of the, it created a model contract that we had to follow, and if we didn't follow with respect to charter schools, it would be presumed to violate the flexibility intended charters. And we sued and said, "We think this violates our local control to control, operate, and supervise." And what the court said is, "Hey, you all as local officials, you do not have standing," and what standing means in the law is the legal ability to sue. "You do not have standing to challenge the constitutionality of some sort of statute." And remember, the governor or law. And remember, the governor's executive order has the force and effect of law. And by statute, you all and the superintendent have to follow all laws and rules promulgated by the State Board of Education. And so, the court said, "The school board's constitutional challenge to House Bill 7069's provision represent their disagreement with new statutory duties enacted by the legislature. As the foregoing authority makes clear, however, the school boards must presume that the provisions at issue are constitutional. Based upon the foregoing, the school boards lack the standing to challenge the constitutionality of House Bill 7069's provisions pertaining to Schools of Hope, the charter school standard contract, and the charter school turnaround provisions." That was the case of school board of Collier County versus Florida Department of Education. Again, we were one of the parties in that case. So, another basis that the courts talked about in saying, "We don't have the ability to sue," is something called the separation of powers. And I'm going to make you all hearken back to your, you know, civics classes that you took back in the day, where, one, the power of the courts cannot invade the power of the legislature, and cannot invade the power of the executive, in this case, the governor. And the court says that the separation of powers doctrine also prohibits school boards from suing to invalidate the governor's order. And here's what they said. "The doctrine which we recently addressed and which is grounded in separation of powers recognizes that public officials are obligated to obey the legislature's duly enacted statute until the judiciary passes on its constitutionality. It is for this reason that a public official's disagreement with the constitutional or statutory duty, or the means by which it's to be carried out, does not create a..." does not create a justiciable controversy or provide occasion to give a judiciary, an advisory judicial opinion." And they also said that "A public official may not challenge the constitutionality of the statute as promoting an important public policy of ensuring the orderly and uniform application of state law." So what they don't want is multiple local governments turning around suing. And in one district in the state, the court may rule that, hey, they don't have to follow this policy. And in another district in the state, the court may say, "Yes, they do have to follow this policy or this rule or this statute." So the court said, "We don't want local officials suing on, on these provisions. They don't have the standing to do it." And then remember the case last year from the Florida Education Association when they sued over the Commissioner's order to reopen schools and the emergency order. They said the Commissioner lacked the authority to do so. And the courts got that. If you remember, the Florida Education Association prevailed in the trial court, but then the First District Court of Appeals in Tallahassee overruled the trial court. And the court said, "It's not the province of the courts to assert the role of the governor and commissioner of education in the political decisions the governor or the commissioner may make in fighting the pandemic." And here's a direct quote. "This court cannot decide whether the state has met its obligation to provide for safe and secure schools unless it makes a policy determination reserved for the executive branch and the non-party school districts. Nor can this court determine whether the governor and commissioner, through their delegated emergency authority, met the executive statutory obligation to address the natural emergency presented by the pandemic. And the court cannot resolve the questions here without expressing a lack of due respect for the coordinate branches of government." Remember Article 1, section, Article 9, Section 1 of the Constitution says, "The state has to make provision by law for safe, secure schools." And the court said, "That is a political decision." Much like, much like, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cobert, Fund Education Now, the lawsuit that made it up to the Supreme Court. And whether or not the legislature was adequately funding the education system in Florida, they said adequacy, there's no standard by which we can manage that. That is the province of the legislature and the governor, and we, the courts, don't step into that. So it's pretty clear from that analysis that I don't think that a court, if we were to challenge these provisions, a court would say that we have standing to do so. And I think the courts would say, "Whether or not the governor made a decision that is going to provide safe schools, secure schools, that is a political decision. And the separation of powers requires us as the courts to stay out of that decision and leave that decision to the local or to the elected officials who they say, who the courts say are most responsive to the needs of the citizens." So penalties for you all if we do not follow these rules. One, we've already talked about, potential loss of state funding over and beyond your salaries. The other one that I, of course, have to warn you about, I don't like doing it, but it is something that you all need to be aware of, is Article 4, Section 7A of the Florida Constitution, which gives the governor the power to remove and to suspend from office any local official who engages in misfeasance or malfeasance. The courts haven't interpreted this power as applying to school board members. It was an advisory opinion from the Florida Supreme Court in 1993. And malfeasance is basically defined as doing something that is an illegal act. So if you all were to violate the rules of the Department of Health and the Department of Education that had been, were adopted last Friday, that would be an illegal act because you would be violating your statutory requirement to enforce the laws and the State Board of Education rules. And if you engage in malfeasance, the governor does have the authority to remove you from office. I'm not saying he's going to do that. I'm not saying he's even intimated that, but it is a potential penalty if we were to decide we are not going to follow the rules that have been promulgated as well as the executive order. So that is a brief, brief overview of where we are, what our opinion is, how we've gotten where we are. And I will be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, we have a number of board members, and I'm not sure if these were on here related to. So let me hold up and see if anybody has questions for Mr. Palmerini. All right, Member Bird does, and I do, and I think Member Gould's probably related to that. Member Bird.
Thank you for that very thorough explanation, Mr. Palmerini. I feel like I've been to law school.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's fine. It was actually very good. Thank you. So you very clearly laid it out. And I have just a couple more follow-up questions. So I want to just kind of get the whole thing of being removed from office out of the way. And why, as I've told the superintendent, I would gladly give up my seat in a heartbeat if it meant that these kids were going to be safe in schools. But can you tell me what would happen once he removes school boards from office? Then what happens to those seats on the school board?
So what happens is when you are removed, the governor then has the power to appoint persons to replace you during the term of the suspension. One would suspect that the governor would appoint folks to replace you all that would comply with the rule that has been laid out. That, that's what I would suspect. But he does have the power to replace you during the suspension.
Right. Thank you. So therefore, standing up and, standing up and allowing yourself to be removed from office probably would not achieve the ultimate goal that you were hoping to achieve by standing up in the first place if someone else replaces you that follows the rules that you were against. Thank you. And then my, oh, actually, you know what? That was my last question for you. I just had a question for the superintendent.
Okay.
Dr. Jenkins, do we remember what the percentage was or the number of kids that had medical exemptions last year from masks? Can you recall?
I don't have that number. Member Bird, I can certainly get it for you. It was a very small number.
Yeah, it was a very small number. Okay. I'm just wondering how, how much that compares to the 4% because I like, Member Castor Dinnell was very relieved to hear that 4%. That's, that's definitely encouraging. And it's very telling, too, that 96% of the kids in this district and the families believe that masks are important. So I'm glad to hear that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let me follow up with just a couple of questions. So I understand, though I disagree with the courts, but that becomes irrelevant because, lest I'm a judge making those decisions, my opinion isn't worth hila beans. But the idea that we don't have standing, is it, would that decision, is it possible that decision would be different if that decision were brought forward by a group of parents versus elected officials? As in the case of, of one particular case, but perhaps more people expressing that same concern? Would they might have the opportunity to get in front of the courts with this issue?
So clearly, I'm not going to talk about the one case to which you're referencing, which we are a party. So this will be a general comment. Potentially, a parent could have standing to bring these actions. But I think they would be met with the same arguments that I talked about. This is a political question about what is a safe school that's best left for the governor and the legislature and the executive branch. Or this is a separation of powers issue. I would, I would suspect the state in fighting any lawsuit from a parent would raise those issues. And the courts would be in, you know, applying the law that, the cases I just referenced. So I think they would not have the same burden as us where we have to presume a law or a rule is constitutional. That would not apply to a parent on behalf of a student. But the underlying issue of second guessing, I guess, the, the governor's decision and the State Board of Education's decision and the Department of Health's decisions, those safety issues and political questions and separations of powers issue, I think, would be raised.
Okay, so let me, let me come at it a slightly different way because that's on this case. So I think the broader question in my mind, and I always struggle with this, when, to me, the Constitution is, is supreme and superior over statute. And so when people write to me and say, "Here's what the Constitution says you have the right to do." And then we look at the statute, which further defines and in many ways erodes the rights that we have and the obligations we have constitutionally. If we can't bring that challenge, couldn't citizens bring that challenge over whether or not the, the legislature has the power to constrain the, the authority that the citizens have given to school districts?
They could potentially bring that case, yes. There are certain arguments, I think, again, that would be made with respect to that. Because if you look at Article 9, Section 1 of the Constitution, it says, "The state shall provide by law for a safe, adequate," and all the other words that they use in that provision. By law means the legislature has to come in and enact a law to make sure that that happens. So I would think that's the state's argument coming back. But I think the, I think parents could say, "Listen, this violates constitutional authority of the school districts." Now, the other argument the state may say is, "Well, wait a minute." It's sort of a, sort of a conundrum. You parents, why are you suing on behalf of the school board about their authority? Wouldn't the school board be the proper party to sue? And then the courts would turn around and say, "Oh, but by the way, school boards can't sue about the constitutionality of laws either."
Right.
So it's an interesting conundrum. I guess that's the politest way I could say that.
I would, I would love to see, I would love to see a group of parents try that just to get greater clarification because I, I just so strongly feel, I so strongly honor the Constitution because it's created by the people. And the people should always control, not individually, not every person controls, but collectively, what we create in the Constitution should be honored and shouldn't be chipped away at. I see the value of the state having a role to play, but not usurping. So, and I understand what you're saying, it's not our place to do that. And I can, I can be at peace with that. But I do think it's the citizens ultimately, not, not eight of us up here or this, the people that work in this school district. It's the citizens, it's the parents, it's the students that ought to have that right and be able to protect and defend that right. Other, other observation that I have about this, because, Member Bird, like you, I've thought, I said it last year, if like I, if I could step down or I could be removed and a magic wand was waved and we could have masks in place while we needed them, that would be my proudest moment, okay? If somebody took away my salary for the year and I could do something that I believed made our school safer, again, this would, this, this is a sacrifice that I would be, and I think we all would be almost honored to make, you know? The problem with it is, it won't accomplish anything because it doesn't change the fact that there's still a rule that has the force of law. So I've thought about what would happen if we just try anyway and whether or not, depending upon the number of kids, when the kids show up and they're doing what the state rule says they can do, our responsibility to those children, once they arrive on our school, we have a responsibility for them. And we can't just send them home with nobody expecting them. We have to care for them. If we're not going to educate them when, when they, when they arrive, I would think, even though it's a small number, and I'm really excited that we're only seeing 4%, I think that number's going to grow because I suspect people sent their kids in without notes the first day and didn't know that part. But still, those parents, I would anticipate, would also challenge us for not educating their children and violating a rule that requires us to. In which case, I'm not an attorney, I'm going to jump out in front of John here, but I don't see, we have a prayer of winning that lawsuit if we are, for instance, putting kids in the office or putting them in the cafeteria all day and not educating them. John, your thoughts on that?
You're 100% right, in my view. I think that's a facial violation of the DOH rule that says you can't isolate kids. You can't keep them separately like that. We do have a statutory responsibility to educate those children who show up at our door to be educated. And I think the courts would look at us and say, "We have a rule in place. You all have not challenged it." I mean, I don't know, you know, we're stuck with not being able to challenge it, in my view, but you all have not challenged it. It's facially valid, and until it's ruled unconstitutional, you as school board members have responsibilities to enforce those, those rules, and you have not done it. And I'm going to order that these kids be put back into school. I, I don't think it would be a very long decision process by the court to do that. Because the presumption is students need to be in school to be educated.
Right.
And they have that statutory right.
But I think, my last editorial comment on this, what troubles me about the rule is in the effort to make sure that parents that want their children to have the freedom not to wear a mask, recognizing the, protecting their rights, the students who are most vulnerable, the ones that I'm hearing from, you all are hearing from, who have doctors saying Johnny should not be in school, given his medical conditions, or do not send Sandra in because of her brother's serious complications. ESE students that desperately need to be in school rather than at home, who are afraid and prohibited from going to school. It troubles me to no end that the governor's effort to support one group's rights, I think, have tremendously infringed on another group's rights. And this isn't a matter of everybody just decide what they want to do for their own child. Some of these decisions affect other children, and I firmly believe that. And even if I'm wrong on the mask issue, when doctors are telling children, "Do not go to school in an environment where other children aren't wearing masks and do not go to a school where instead of 50% of the children being in school like last year, on average, 100% or 90% are going to be back in school, and they're going to be crowded into classrooms where we can't socially distance them." So many layers of protection have been taken away from our most vulnerable children. And children are in hospitals, and children are in ICUs, and children here in the state of Florida have died in the last several weeks. So parents that are worried are, they're legitimate. It is a legitimate concern and a right for them to be worried. And the respecting of one group's right at the expense of another group's right is heartbreaking to me. And the fact that we are sitting here in this position and have no viable option to address this is, it is the worst feeling I've ever had being in elected office. So let me turn to Member Gould.
Thank you, Chair. You've said a lot of what I wanted to say and kind of highlight, but there are a few things that, that I would also just like to point out. One, I'm in agreement that while we are in a difficult situation, we must continue to follow the laws now and continue to educate our community on the advantages of home rule in honoring the Constitution and the intent of the Constitution and our ability to educate the kids on a local level. So I, I agree with that, and I hope that there are people who really begin to understand where they want their local elected officials to be able to much more surgically and judiciously react to local situations, not only COVID, but in many other instances. I think we need to continue to deliver and support the superintendent's rules and policies for, whether it's masks or anything else, if we have to go back to any kind of bubbles or whatever it is, based on the facts and the best data we have at the moment. Not only locally, regionally, statewide, and globally. Unfortunately, we are living in a live lab right now. And there are some of the absolute best minds around the world and the best experts all, you know, taking the data in and reshaping policy. And we're in you know, taking the data in and reshaping policy, and we're in that fluid of a situation, and we're going to continue to have to act diligently and with efficacy to the best of our ability in the moment for what's happening in our community. And we just need to be able to protect the kids. I equate our school board, our superintendent, our staff as the seat belts for our children. Seat belts do not prevent injury in a car accident, but they mitigate the risk of death. And they mitigate the risk of impairing somebody for life. It doesn't prevent it. We need to use every tool in our toolbox when we are having these peaks and valleys until COVID is completely gone from our vocabulary, to be able to protect the one most vulnerable that you outlined so well, Chair. So just as we wanted to do the same with the heart condition and our sports physicals, we need to do that for all the kids who are having their education impeded to the best of our ability. I have a question, and I don't know if, I believe this would be from Mr. Palmerini, and it's a little to the side of this topic, but I was presented with information today that we may have had students who knew they were on the quarantine list show up for school. I believe that there was confusion about the option to wear masks or not to wear masks and to come to school if you have an active COVID case. So if I could get an answer on that, I would appreciate it.
That, that's more of an operational issue than, than a legal issue with respect to that. I mean, the Department of Health assists us with quarantine and gives us letters to say, this is how long the person should quarantine and be out of school, and we expect those letters to be followed. If we are getting folks who are not following those letters, our schools will follow up with the appropriate officials to make sure that they're aware that we have people that are being told to quarantine to, that are not doing it.
But the opt-out rule does not cover quarantining?
No, no. If, if the Department of Health says the student needs to quarantine, the student needs to quarantine, and we have the rule that was adopted by DOE, that's the attendance rule, that says if they're under a stay-home order, that as long as we, and I'm summarizing this because I don't have it in front of me, so forgive me if I don't cite it exactly, but as long as we give them access to the curriculum, as long as we give them access to the assignments, and as long as there is a teacher or administrator that is available to help assist them with assignments, whether it's answering their emails or a telephone call, then we can count the student as present even though they're under the stay-home order, and they would still be doing their work while they were staying home. This all presumes, of course, that the student is asymptomatic and feeling fine. Of course, we don't want students who are feeling badly because they have COVID, and we want them to recover if they're not able to do their work. But if they're given a quarantine letter and they're still asymptomatic, they will have access to their curriculum and assignments, usually it's going to be through a Canvas course, and they will have access to teachers and to help them with assignments, but through the normal means, like, like any other student who would be absent, emails, telephone calls, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Palmerini, and yes, I should have said it was a typical, you know, if somebody shows up with asymptomatic, but they have tested positive for carrying the virus or have the virus in their house. So thank you for that, for that clarity, and I believe it is covered in the FQAs, but that might be something we want to lift and highlight to make clarity so that the asymptomatic and, and mask opt-out are not overlapping in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with your comments as well, Chair Jacobs. I, I believe that all of us has a lot of concerns, and, you know, we receive a lot of emails expressing the same concerns about the mask. I have two questions for Mr. Palmerini. The first one is, you know, because I feel that the executive order is a manipulation, and for me, it's a threat for us. And, you know, even though I try to be politically correct, but I can't, I would like to know if we have to follow 100% of the executive order, because I know that as a school board, we also have a responsibility to look for the students' well-being and safety. That's the first question. Do you want me to ask all the question or one by one?
At your pleasure, whichever you would like to do.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's the first one then.
Okay. John, go ahead.
All right, so my opinion is, yes, we have to follow the executive order 100%. If we don't, we could be in violation of that statute that says we have to follow all laws. And remember, the executive order has the force and effect of law. So yes, my opinion is we have to follow it 100%.
Got it. So I also agree to one member, Bird, with the lose the seat, or in this case, in my case, thinking about the salary, because the life of our students and staff are worth more than my salary. But in case one of the school board members have a different opinion in terms of the use of the mask, you know, that only school board member is the one that is going to be punished by the government, or all of us can be punished because of that or the county?
So that's a question of, and I'm just using a four instance here, let's say it's a five to three vote to make masks required with no opt-out. I would suspect that there would be action taken at least against the five who voted in favor to do that in violation of the executive order. I would not think that there would be a basis to suspend the other three because they would have voted in compliance with the executive order and the rules laid out. That, that's my best guess. You know, there's, I've looked up the case law on suspension underneath this, there's just not a lot there. It's, it's very, very sparse, but that's my best guess, that he would remove those who actually voted in violation of the executive order and the rules and not remove those who did not.
So it through a vote, not through a recommendation or comment?
This is usually done in conjunction with votes, not, not recommendations. But remember, again, so, and, and I think I want to make this extremely clear for everybody who's listening, and I know you all know this too, so you all could vote in a way to tell the superintendent to do something that's an illegal act. And the superintendent has a statutory responsibility to not engage in an act that's illegal. So she would be put in the position to say, I understand what the board voted, however, I have a statutory duty not to violate laws and rules of the State Board of Education either. So I, I just want to make that perfectly clear. This is usually done in association with votes, but even with votes, she can't, she being the superintendent can't violate the law either.
And how do the staff of the, how do the staff keep track of the students who opt out to wear a mask and the other ones who are supposed to stay with the mask? Do we have any type of, of, you know, rule or structure? Because I think that is very challenging for our staff members to keep track of that. And it's our responsibility to respect the parental choice, so what are we doing in the school?
It's gonna, you want me to answer it, Madam Superintendent?
Who wants to answer that question?
I, I can answer that for you, Member Lopez, since that's more on the operational side than legal. I, I think Deputy General Counsel Palmerini would certainly indicate if you don't have a hard and fast rule, you can't ask your teachers to therefore enforce it. Here's what the reality is. In each of our schools, when those notes were brought in today, we have a mechanism to put it into our computer system, so the first-period teacher through the sixth-period teacher would be aware that Johnny, I keep saying Johnny, I'm going to use Harrison instead as my son, because somebody's son is Johnny. So if Harrison has a note, his sixth-period teacher would also know because they're going to flag it in the computer system. It is meant to be non-intimidating, uneventful on the part of the student, the teachers would just be aware. There is no need for a child to carry a note around with them in case he gets stopped in the hallway, that question came to us, or carry it and give it to each of their teachers, that question has come forward as well. Member Lopez, we simply will flag it in our computer system, so any teacher when taking attendance would know that Harrison has an opt-out provision for his mask, and therefore they, they would have no concern. We're not asking teachers to do any kind of enforcement for students keeping masks on or having masks off, they simply will see it flagged and they can refer to an administrator if they think there's a problem. But we don't want any teacher to feel responsible for policing the use of masks.
I understand, thank you. And, and also I have another question to Mr. Palmerini.
Please.
And is, we don't have the power as a school board to challenge or to sue the government or the executive order, but can a group of parents could do that or not?
I think they, I think they do have the standing to bring the lawsuit, but like I said, I think some of the issues that I previously raised that these court decisions were decided on, is this a violation of the separation of powers between the governor, the legislature, and the courts? Whether or not the governor is providing for safe schools under the constitutional provision? They would, the, the governor and the Commissioner of Education, I would assume, would raise those cases previously to say, courts, even though parents don't have to presume the law is constitutional, nevertheless, they still can't sue us for these reasons. It remains to see what the court would do with it. I, I would suspect they would apply the same decisions and reach the same results, but at least parents have standing, especially if they have students within the schools, whereas we as a school board do not because of the court cases saying we have to presume laws and rules are constitutional.
The last question is, can we improve the safety procedural manual or not?
Can you improve or approve? I'm sorry.
Can we improve it? Can we improve the, the safety procedural manual? Because I think that everybody, I'm receiving emails with, with a lot of concerns about that, maybe because now that we have an optional, you know, opt-out opportunity for parents that don't want to use the mask on their children, now we have more flexibility in terms of using the mask, but we don't have the same protocols to be followed to look for that safety and that social distance.
So, Member Lopez, one of the things that I asked the superintendent if she could do this evening, I asked her if she could provide to the board a document that explains which parts of the previous manual were removed and why. And I think with that, we will be, the board will be better poised to look at that and determine if there are things that we think could be put back in or something different. So I think that would be a good starting point for us.
Yes, great idea.
Okay, so let's start with that document.
Great idea, thank you so much.
Of course, because I'm getting the same emails as you are, and I've tried to go through the two and compare them, and I think rather than each of us individually doing that, I think one cohesive document would be helpful to all of us. So thank you for bringing up both, both of those issues, as well as the issue about whether or not parents or citizens have the right to challenge this. I think those are excellent points. Anything else, Member Lopez?
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lopez.
That's going to be all.
Okay. Member Kesterdennel.
Let's see where I left off. Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Mr. Palmerini. Let's say that the governor's emergency order was overturned, or there was an injunction granted, would school boards then be allowed to then in, kind of implement their own mask mandate then, without violating anything?
I would say probably the answer is yes. I would have to see the terms of the injunction and what was exactly enjoined, but if the injunction said, for example, this, this, this executive order violated some sort of constitutional or statutory provision and is not enforceable in its entirety, then the answer would be, then the school boards in the absence of the executive order being enforceable would have the authority to regulate in the field, and they could pass their own mask policy in that case.
Okay. So then the commissioner also wrote a letter, would the, I guess, since it is connected to the emergency order, it would also no longer be in play if there was an injunction granted?
That would be correct. If an injunction says this order is not enforceable, and it would probably also have to say, and the rules promulgated coming out of the order are not enforceable, and if that were the case, then the commissioner could not penalize districts for violating an order and rules that are no longer enforceable because they've been enjoined.
Okay, that, that helps clarify, thank you. We don't know when that lawsuit, or any lawsuit, will be decided, but it could happen after the latest Delta variant peaks, and we start to see some relief, so I'm not holding my, my breath on that as a, a method. So I think it is, I guess, the school board in the district, we still have a great responsibility to protect not just our students and teachers and staff, but the community in general, and the, and, and try to protect them from getting sicker and from spreading the disease. So I would, I think it's important that our school district is not simply a neutral player in, in the way we communicate. I mean, we've already decided that we strongly recommend face masks, and we're putting in other protocols, and if we're strongly recommending, I would hope that we're following up and we're not just being more proactive. So I, I would like to recommend that the district be very transparent with teachers and staff and parents and community members about what's happening in our schools as far as our COVID and quarantine rates, and not just leaving it on our, on our dashboard for people to come see, because there's a lot of people who don't even know that exists. If we could push that information out or make it more accessible, maybe in the school, the school websites, or in the PTA newsletters, or school newsletters, or emails, or even on the marquee, if we could provide some kind of information that alerts the community, I think then we have, we're, we're giving parents that information that they can act on before they find out too late that they sent their child to a school that was a hotspot. I remember last year, a lot of teachers and staff felt like they were in the dark about things that were happening in their own school, they were the last to, to know that someone that they ate lunch with was positive. So if we can enhance our communication and really push it out, I know that's not necessarily for you, Mr. Palmerini, that's, I think it's important that we are proactive, even in the, the mayor, Mayor Demings' weekly meetings, if we can share more information with the mayor about what's happening in our schools as well, so that we just keep those lines of communication open. And then I had another question about vaccinations, when, well, even before the, the younger students are available for the vaccinations. If we could have just permission slips that parents sign that a student can receive the vaccine at school, I think that would be helpful. I don't know. I don't know if there's an organization that does that or if there is a partnership with the Department of Health and we rotate professionals around. But I know that we do vaccinate kids in schools. And we're still at such a low level. And I think it's vital to get our vaccination rates up. It could also be available to the staff and teachers. Okay, I see Dr. Jenkins writing that down.
Chair.
Dr. Jenkins, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. So we have a partnership where the health department is helping us provide those vaccines. Several of the vaccine clinics have been in partnership with Health Heroes. If we do, are able to do vaccines during the school day or at the end of the school day, it would require permission slips. Our legal counsel would be engaged in that. I am very supportive. As we've done vaccines in the past, permission from the parent would provide for the vaccine without the parent being present. And so that is our intention. Dr. Pino has been talking with us about expanding vaccination opportunities in our schools. So happy to continue to pursue that.
Excellent. Thank you. Also, in reference to some of the problems with parents who are sending kids today that should have been quarantined. I know we received a decision tree that the department put out. If we could share that information and let parents know in a graphic form ahead of time what to expect if they're quarantined. It was much easier for me to understand it. And then they can refer back to it when their student is at home. I think that kind of information is also helpful to get out there.
Dr. Jenkins.
So, point of clarification. There was a bit of a conflict between folks in Tallahassee and some local expertise around the decision trees. Once we have mitigated that disagreement, we will make that decision tree available and push out using our social media as well so parents can understand that. There was just a bit of a glitch on what folks from the Department of Education shared and what our local Department of Health thought the guidance was. I'm hopeful that that's been cleared up today. We'll certainly make it available once it's cleared up.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Member Felder.
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Yes. Thank you so much for the explanation. I'm like Member Bird. I felt like I was in a history class. I was feverishly writing out all these articles and everything. But I want to say this. First of all, this, as a board, we have had to make some very difficult decisions. And all of us, with the exception of myself, we have biological children. Some of us have children who are in school. And, but as a teacher, I fully understand some of the concerns my colleagues are having or had. And I would just like to say to the public who's watching and listening that we live in a democratic society. And I'd like to admonish you to exercise your democratic right to express what you find difficult to digest in terms of your children and where you are as a teacher, as your children or just having to deal with this pandemic. We all are gingerly trying to handle what has been given to us. Mr. Palmieri, I want to thank you for explicitly explaining to us what all of this means in terms of the governor's right and what our rights are as a board. I'd like again to reiterate to the public that none of us take what we are trying to, the decisions we're making very lightly. I need you to understand that there's some empathy behind what we're saying and what we're thinking about. And we're thinking about you. The other thing that I'd like to say is that along with School Board Member Castor Dental, I want transparency with regards to cleaning. You know, and money is always an issue, but we're in a pandemic. And we need to be very transparent at schools. If things are not being cleaned or if there's some issues, people need to come forward. And they don't need to feel like they're going to be punished for sharing their concerns about the cleanliness. Because this is serious. And I know I'm not the long ranger, but I've lost two friends within this week with this COVID. And, you know, I'm so paranoid about this thing and so serious. So I'm so happy as a board that we can at least talk about it. We do talk about it. We have discussions about it. We allow the public to come in and to express, even if they're rude or disrespectful. We still allow them to come in because we understand that they, you know, we work for the public. And we want you to be able to express. But I want you to take on your responsibility as an American, as one who practices your rights. And you have elected all of us. You elected the governor, you elected each of us that's sitting on this board. With the exception of Dr. Jenkins and Amy, they were appointed. But listen, they're so responsible to make sure that things are going in the way that you so desire. So I'm glad that we have given, been given that information. But again, let me just reiterate as I close, the transparency in terms of children and parents. If your child is sick, having any other symptoms, we need to have transparency. The cleanliness at the schools need to be, we need to know what is, what is going on with that. And people need to not feel that they can't say that there's a problem. Because we need to fix the problem if there is a problem. So I'm so glad you explained to us again, let me just say this in closing. As an American citizen in this free country, you need to exercise your right to make choices. That's one thing that a democracy gives you, gives you the ability to make choices. And you need to make some choices. Thank you.
Member Gala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today in Broward County, they did, they did two things. One of the things that they did is that they voted to challenge the rule that the governor set forth. Do you know exactly what it is they're challenging or what standing they have with that action that they took today?
Don't know exactly what they're challenging yet. I'm very familiar with the general counsel down there. I mean, we can give her a call tomorrow. I know they were going long in that board meeting today. So as I sit here today, I don't know what the basis of the challenge would be. So I would love to have a conversation to see what they're doing with it. But as I sit here today, I don't know what the basis would be.
So when the, and another question.
Please.
When the executive order came out, and you talked about the different branches of government earlier. But when the executive order came out, the rulemaking body changed policy. They literally changed or added to policy that technically only the legislature has the authority to do. So would there be a standing or a stance by saying that was under your authority? You can't change policy. You can only enact rules to policy already set forth by the legislature?
A normal rule challenge is, one of the basis for a rule challenge would be that the agency has acted outside of the delegated legislative authority, right? Again, I'm not sure that, I don't think we have the standing to assert that. Could a member of the legislature who feels like his or her power has been asserted by the agency in that way, they may have the standing to assert that challenge. But I don't think that we do.
Okay. And then hypothetically, in reference to some of the districts that have decided to mandate masks in their districts, if they have parents that defy the mandate, what recourse do they have? And is there any case law or anything that would be on the side of the district? Like what would, if they, what would, what would their request be? What could they do?
So the basis of your question, I think, is, hey, we have a mandate that says only a doctor's note can opt you out. And the parent says, I don't care. I'm sending my kid to school.
Yes.
So I think in that scenario, the, the school district would probably have in, you know, some sort of code of conduct provision that would say the children are insubordinate. And they would probably discipline them under the insubordination provision. It's very similar to what we had last year in our mask policy when we said, you know, if a student doesn't wear it, then we can take action under the code of conduct. So at that point, the parent could say, hey, wait a minute. You don't have that authority. Here's the emergency, or here's the executive order. Here's the rules that have been passed. You can't do that. And they may say, the school board may say, yes, we do have that authority. We've passed the policy. And they could challenge the school board's disciplinary action as being unconstitutional under those provisions. That would be, it would go through the school disciplinary process. And then it would go up to the DCA because District Courts of Appeal have the appeal jurisdiction for student, code of conduct, disciplinary actions that we take as a board. I, you know, I think that's a, that's a scenario that could happen. I think that would probably get highly publicized if that were the case, where they were disciplining children like that. I think, you know, that, that, I think these districts are gonna get action from the governor and the commissioner of education, similar to the letter that we saw here today saying, hey, once again, you're violating our order. And then they may take the penalties of, okay, here comes your funding. We're pulling your funding now. And if we lose our funding, of course, that's a very difficult position for us to all be in.
Yes, it is. So I just want to say that I agree with what my fellow board members have said up here with almost, almost every single one of you. We do have to be transparent. We're in a very precarious predicament. I, like the chair, I am upset with the way this all was laid out. I do think that we were usurped of our, our authority as a school board. And they didn't, just didn't take our rights away. They took the rights of the people, the voters of Orange County. Because they voted to put us in office to make the best decision for their children. And that unilaterally was taken away from them because we had, we had one person deciding what was best for everybody across the state. So I do find that disconcerting. I also find it a little bit ironic that the EO that came out, one stated, you have to, you can't mandate masks. And then the other one basically said, but we know you're gonna have a lot of absences because you're not mandating masks. So we've got to get together attendance policy so that we're not flunking all the kids. I find that like those two don't go together very well. But this isn't really a laughing matter. So I do think that we need to be transparent. I know that there were some questions about the dashboard. And then I have a question for Dr. Jenkins about that attendance policy. The emergence, what will that look like? Particularly the piece with, with the teachers. Will that need to be bargained? I mean, they're already working a full day. Now they have to be available to students. So what, what will that look like for our teachers?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So we've looked at the information and listened to the conference call. Access to the teacher, I want you to think of it like if a child were out, if Harrison were out with tonsillitis. He would, I would be in touch with that teacher. I would be emailing or calling her, trying to catch her during her planning period or after school. That kind of contact is sufficient. There is no requirement nor an expectation that the teacher be available teaching both in her classroom and the child at home. We are still very hopeful. We had put in our MOU that we went back and forth with the union over that teachers could voluntarily create audible access so a student could listen in and hear the lecture or hear the demonstration without actually being engaged with the class. We're still hopeful about that. But DOE said access could be an email that comes from the parent to the student. Keep in mind, we, and we actually have some further detail that's going out to schools. We'll certainly get the board to copy as well and put it out on our media for parents to access. We actually still have our digital platform. So students working in their classrooms today probably had their laptops out engaging some with our digital platform with Canvas. So if small numbers of children are out, they can go on Canvas and see the assignments and perhaps watch a video of some, something that was used in class and complete homework and engage and email back and forth with the teacher. That is the access that is required. And so we were pleased to hear that yesterday. I was concerned that access meant synchronous, synchronous instruction of what's going on in the classroom. And that is not what is expected.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And then, go ahead, Member Gala. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. In reference to the dashboard, I do think, I like Member Castor Dental's idea about communicating that more often. I know that as a board member, we've all been frustrated with the lack of data that's come from the state, the lack of daily numbers, records requests that went all but ignored that we asked for. And I think data is so important when we're in the middle of a pandemic. It, it, it could let them know where the hotspots are, like Member Castor Dental mentioned. Or it could let them know where the safe areas. It's just, this kind of data is so important. Our parents are scared. They're putting their most precious commodity into our schools. And it's just imperative that we do everything to keep the kids safe, our teachers safe, and any data that we can provide, any reassurances we could give, making sure our schools are clean, as a member Felder mentioned. I think those are all important. Because I think it's important to remember all the hard work we did last year around COVID. We put in those MIR filters. You know, we tried to social distance. We have this health and safety guide that we put together last year. And we do need to review what was removed and what is still there. But we did so much. And it's all these items together that mitigate and stop the spread of virus. It's not just one thing on its own. So in any way, in anything that we can do to be as transparent as possible, I think is very important during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gala. Member Castor Dental.
Madam Chair, I apologize.
Sorry, Dr. Jenkins.
I apologize. I should have clarified one more thing. So the dashboard, just as it did last year, updates every evening. So anyone can certainly look on to see the most up-to-date. But I want to be very clear. We depend on the Department of Health to help us gauge when there's a positive test and when there is quarantine. I want, and I want to discourage folks from trying to spread on their own. I understand in Karen's class, there was a case today and the entire class should have been sent home because that may not be the case. The contact tracing happens with DOH. And the rumor mill, we have to try to control by saying when DOH confirms a case and does their contact tracing, that's when we update and that's when we take action. And I know it's hard. I know people are concerned. But we really have to resist. I remember last year, and not that any of this is a distant memory for us now, but last year there were rumors saying, oh, the entire ninth floor should have been sent home because there was a case up there. We have to stop the rumor mill and say, we have a process. When there's a case, we will deal with it. And we work with DOH very diligently to make sure we are surgical rather than sweeping and sending an entire wing home or an entire floor. I think one individual said the whole building should have been wiped out. It was COVID central, I think, was, was the concern. We, we need to be a little more precise and surgical and working with our experts around both quarantines and isolation. So I wanted to give that reassurance as well as the other mitigation that we had last year being in place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Follow up.
I'm sorry. I forgot to ask about testing. We had discussed trying to get more testing available to our students. I didn't know if you had an update on that.
Don't have an update. Dr. Pino actually has some funding, grant dollars that are coming in. We are very pleased about. Hopefully we'll have something to announce shortly.
Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sitting here thinking about our next meeting, which is in two weeks. And a lot can happen in two weeks. And we are not able to meet before that or have discussions. So I wonder if it would be prudent to schedule an additional meeting before the 24th, maybe a week from today, giving us enough time to notice, just so that we could review the data. I don't know if it needs to be in a work session format or workshop just so that we can discuss and look at everything and make sure we understand the status.
I think it's an excellent idea. There's two approaches. We could go ahead and schedule it so that it's available should we need to. And I think that would be definitely at a minimum, the prudent thing to do. I do think with all the uncertainty that we have and, you know, just today, you know, I wanted, like everybody else, I'm sure, wanted to get as much data as I could on the first day. And how, how can we have that when we're meeting at four and five o'clock? So, Dr. Jenkins, do you have any problem with us meeting next Tuesday for an update on how things are going?
I think you may have surpassed your notice. General counsel was just telling me you've already passed your notice.
If it were just an update as, yeah, what, what day could we meet?
If it is a work session notice, you could do the 18th or the 19th potentially. Or you could, actually, Madam Chair, what I'd like to recommend is that we, as we've done in the past, that we put a hold on it for a potential meeting and not go to any extreme with an agenda in case there is nothing new to discuss, then we won't need to actually hold it.
Okay.
We can, we can put the notice out and adjust in case we need it.
So we could do that on the 18th. Let's do that for the 18th. Okay? And Dr. Jenkins will have an opportunity, obviously, to talk to each one of you in terms of how everybody's feeling and get a sense of the board's desire to utilize that meeting or not. Work? Great idea. Thank you for the suggestion, Member Caster Dental. Member Colbert. Bring it home.
Okay. I've been chastised a little bit lately for being quiet, mostly because I agree with my fellow board members and don't feel the need to repeat.
Who chastised you?
Oh, all the emails that were down here. Anyway, just a couple of things I'd like to say. I, I agree, I think a work session is a great idea. We could review the data in public, you know, what, where are we in compliance with mask or opting out? We could review the safety manual and what has been removed, and we could discuss that in public. I think that's a great idea. I, I do want to make just a couple of statements for the record. And one is that, you know, we are tasked right now with making a lot of very difficult decisions, controversial decisions for which many people disagree and disagree vehemently. But the only thing that this board and superintendent are trying to do are keep our students safe and in school. And that is the lens that we use when we're trying to make these, these decisions. I'd also like to go on the record about the executive order. I believe that it does usurp local authority, and it steps on the rights of Orange County citizens who elect their local leaders to make decisions for Orange County. If we're going to continue down this path of stepping on local authority, then why not remove mayors, city council people, county commissioners for making decisions for, for our people? I believe it waters down the Constitution and the rule of law. I believe that making decisions for Orange County, those decisions might be different than what's good for Highlands County or Hendry County. And for, those are the reasons that I disagree with the use of, of this and other executive orders. And I just want to go on record, no matter where you stand on the issues, that steps on your rights as citizens to have decisions in Orange County made in Orange County. And it's important that, that I put that out there. And again, there's much disagreement out, out there. And I just want people to understand that the, the number one guide that we're using in making these decisions right now is what is best for children, what is best for our employees, our community, how do we keep them all safe, and how do we keep them in school? And, and that's our most important guide, and I just want to put that out there for people to understand. We don't take this lightly. We take this very, very seriously. This is what keeps us up at night, and this is what consumes us. And I think every person sitting at this table feels the same way. And I, it's important that I just say that publicly. Thank you for that time, Chair.
No, thank you, Member Colbert, and thank you for, for saying that because I, I know, I know without a question that that is the motivation for each of these board members. I wish there were a way that we could effectively convince people that come into the chambers. As you said, well, it's not about agreeing on every issue, but knowing the motivation behind our decisions, I think is important. I, I guess I have one more, one more issue with regard to the decisions that are being made at a state level that trouble me. So if I, if I look, I try to make my decisions based on values and principles and, and have consistency behind why I do things. It may not always be self-evident to people, but I can explain. This is, this is a core value and this drives my decisions. I struggle today with the decision that every parent should be able to decide what's best for their child. And yet, an option for education of launch ed this year was taken away from our parents. So I think if the guiding principle at a state level is parents know what's best and government should not try to usurp the authority of parents, I think this was a bad year to take away an option that would have given great peace to a lot of our parents and would have given us the ability to operate our schools far safer. Because whether you believe in masks or not, I don't think anybody disagrees that social distancing is extremely helpful, and it's been made nearly impossible by forcing all of our kids back into the classroom and back into our cafeterias. Our classrooms won't be tremendously affected, but our cafeteria is tremendously affected. And if there's any place I worry about, it's the cafeteria. So I struggle with the inconsistency of a principle that parents should have those choices, but taking away an extremely important choice that was more valuable this year than last year. So I have two other issues I wanted to, as we're talking about policy issues, to come back to the board.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
I'm sorry, we were looking at the calendar, if we can actually consider holding that date for the 19th instead. That gives us three additional data points for FDOH, usually on Mondays and Thursdays. So I'll talk to Dr. Pino, I'd like to look at either the 19th or the 20th, and we'll get back to the board on that.
Thank you. Two, two other areas. We owe this board an update on the ESE audit. And the audit is not completely finished, but it is largely there. And I was hoping that we could, this has been so challenging with our calendar and with the almost triage nature of operating right now. But, Dr. Jenkins, I wanted to see if we could look at a window of opportunity, not for a final report, but for an update on where we stand on the ESE audit. That was brought up last, at our last meeting, and I know an update is, is about ready, but I just don't know about scheduling it. So I'm not asking for an answer right now, if you could just look at that. The other issue, I am assuming, a lot of times I will see that we're all copied on emails, and sometimes they're just to me. And I don't know if they're doing, if they're sending emails, I, pardon me, if they're blind copied or separate. So I think I am up to six people in the last several months that have been denied their application to either teach or more often volunteer due to the FBI background check provision. And until this year, I never even knew such a thing existed. And because of the number that I'm seeing this year and the dialogue that this board had the last time we discussed it, in spite of how busy our calendar is, I think this issue needs to get back to the board for at least a board workshop. And, and through that workshop, hopefully, we can provide some direction for rulemaking. But it concerns me that the number, I also asked if we could get a report of how many people have been denied for that same reason over the years, and how many of them have appealed and been successful. So to try to understand what happened this year, you know, why are we seeing so many? And so I wanted to share that with the board and hope that we can move that process forward at least to get information in front of the board and have a conversation about ways that we might make this a bit more reasonable. So with that, Member, Member Bird, Member Gallo. Member Bird.
I'll be quick.
No, no problem. I was just, I was saying there was one and I got confused.
It's okay. I just wanted to share some good news.
Go ahead.
And on a good note, right? This morning, I-
Then you need to save it. Because I don't know what, I don't know what Member Gallo is gonna say, if she doesn't have good news.
Should you go first? This morning, I, along with the mayor of Apopka, went up to the Apopka Bus Depot. And we handed out donuts and coffee and orange juice to the bus drivers and welcomed them back to work. And I just wanted to kind of share with you all my experience because it was just so, it made me feel so good and I really needed it. But these bus drivers who just, they often go so unnoticed because they're in their buses all day long. They don't work with coworkers in a building where other people can brag on them, you know, or whatever. But they showed up, it's pitch black dark outside, 5:30 in the morning, and they're walking up just smiling, I mean, they had masks on, but you could tell they were smiling. They were just smiling and cheerful, and you could tell that they missed doing what they loved doing. And they were so excited to be back at work and to go pick up their kids. And it was just, it was so heartwarming just to see them. And I, it was such a blessing today. So I just, I wanted to give a little shout out to them. We know how valuable they are, and we, and we talk about it up here, but it's just another thing to see them at work and the joy that they get from their job. So it was just, it was a great morning. Just wanted to share with you.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was such a sweet story. Two things. Number one, is a question, then I want to make a comment. The crossing guards, do they fall under our purview? Because I, I passed three crossing guards today on my way here that were out in 100-degree weather with masks on, and no one was around them, and so I want to know who's in charge of allowing those poor people.
That would be the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, okay. And maybe they wanted to, it's just I passed three and all three of them had masks on, and there was, they weren't around anybody. They were just standing outside in the hot sun, and maybe it was their decision, but I, I did feel bad for them.
We'll pass that along.
Okay. And then, second, I wanted to say that it, it has been really rough on the school board, and not just the school board, but the district. We've been getting inundated with emails, and with every email that we get, it usually requires a response or help from the district. So I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Jenkins' staff, to Dr. Vasquez, who I email, I don't know how many times a day, and she graciously always emails me back very quickly, by the way. And, and to Mr. Pomorini, who's answered all of our questions last year, and Ms. Invall's absent. It, it's, it's so appreciated. I know that we're all going through it, and I, as hard as it's been, the, knowing that I have, I know that I'm in the same boat as everybody sitting up here on this dais, and I know that we're all concerned and we're all doing the best that we can, has gotten me through some moments when I didn't know if I was going to be able to get through it. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's chipped in and made this a great first day, and for everybody who's helped us out tremendously as we navigate through these waters. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Gould.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to circle back to something you were talking about, Chair, and that is the, the application process and the background check. I thought the last time we had a speaker in, we left it that it was gonna go through a policy revision that would be brought back to be workshopped. So I'm asking for the same thing, but I'm asking for it in a little different way to see if it's already in process.
No, Member Gould, that's the reason I brought it up. I don't think it's calendared, and my thinking is if it's a matter of staff coming up with recommendations, we could agenda it just to get some board direction. But I'd like to, I'd like to see this moved forward because we have a number of people who are just trying to volunteer. Another one approached me, a coach. And, and it,
Yes.
I'm really, I think there is a, a more reasonable approach towards this than what we're doing. And I don't want people to miss the whole season because it takes us two months, three months, to go through rule development, so I think guidance from the board might be helpful.
I agree. I agree. I, I, I just think we discussed it and had some consensus around a direction that could get at least a red line in front of us instead of starting from scratch. That's all I wanted.
I, I agree.
I mean, it may end up starting from scratch, yeah.
Yeah, but the thing,
Thank you.
Well, the thing I think is important about this is that the rule that we have doesn't specifically speak to this issue, but I understand how it's interpreted. And so I think that there might be an opportunity for us to have board dialogue to provide some direction while we maybe add to the policy to clarify what is intended for employees that are here versus people applying. I, I've given a lot of thought, I see great value in what we have, but I also see that there's ways that we could modify it as it applies to people who have very old items that were either dismissed or considered irrelevant. I also do wonder if there's been a little confusion in people over the last several months going through the application process. But anyway, it's neither here nor there. Bottom line is, as soon as we can get this, an opportunity for the board to discuss it, the sooner I think we can be moving forward, if that means we need to start with a work session. But I, I mean, a rule development workshop, but I feel like once we're in that phase, there's drafting, and if we have to start over, it's a slower process, that it might be quicker to start with a board discussion, work session, and then start with something more solid, was what I was thinking. An extra step might be faster.
I, I think it's, we're gonna get to the same result, so I'm, I'm happy with whatever we think will be the most prudent path to resolve this.
Thank you. You and I are completely on the same page. It's just, what's the most expeditious and prudent path? Anything further for this meeting? All right. All right, everybody. Hang in there, and we'll see you next week. God bless. Meeting adjourned. I'm talking to myself.
Good night, everybody.